Everyone, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Manchester Planning Board to order. And we're a little bit late this morning, I apologize, we have some other business to take care of. Um, so roll call, Brian Fry.
Yes.
Jim Morton.
Yes.
So Gilbert here. And you have your chair. They're pretty present, uh, Chris Olker here. And Gordon Bristow here. Great, thank you, um, welcome everyone. The first order of business, I just wanna, um, mention that we'll take, uh, public comment throughout the meeting, but, uh, we wanna have, uh, board discuss things first. So welcome everybody, the first order of business is to review the proposed new downtown zoning district. Um, I'll turn it over to Mark, uh, for your comments about where we are and your needs. Well, I'm not the most share, oh, I guess I could share if we need to.
Yeah, well, um.
You could share.
Let's try and, I've got my speed throughout, but I can put them now, because if I do, the vision from now.
Yep. You had to get up.
Okay, I'll screen.
Put a audio, are you in?
I'm running up the sound.
No. Are you?
Are you here?
Are you in me? How many?
Yeah, I just got better. I choose.
Somebody looking over your shoulder. One of the challenges is when you join with a, a computer audio. We're gonna get you in. We've got that little carrot, no, this one, yeah. Here, buddy. Okay. So to share, you're gonna have to request, somebody's got to.
Yep.
You slide in, no, there, instead of here.
You have what, I would have asked here, just push on, sure. Then what's?
Um, can, oop, you do that again. You just got out of your meeting. Alright, just keep requests, so.
So, want to break?
Alright, there you go. Okay, maybe, minimize that up, up reading. Alright, so they are packing.
Uh, yes, absolutely, anyone is back.
The new one, is that, okay.
Yes.
I, I was, I apologize.
Well, it still has, it constantly.
Alright.
It's like for the whole room. Also, there are few good moments, right? Grabbing the coffee.
Uh, Mark, if you can.
I'm staying here, I want to see what the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
I, I, that's, Mark, if you can unshare, just wait or share. Okay, we're good.
That's it. There it is.
Okay. Alright, um, go ahead, Mark, I'm gonna turn it bigger while we.
So, uh, math is very similar to the app that we discussed at the last meeting, but then the planning board, uh, last week did a walk around downtown, uh, which we had some creative pennants from several other boards, who, others, several property owners and citizens. Um, we made a few changes, uh, let's, we'll start the way we did the site blocking, we walked, uh, we didn't make any changes going up down street at all, or up school street, uh, down Union Street stayed the same. Uh, going down Summer, to Summer Street, uh, we did include at the building where the laughing golf is, that was, uh, removed before. Um, so we've added that, the rest of, uh, uh, Summer Street, Harbor Point, and up to Capon Street remain the same. But the other change, and then along B Street remained the same, but what we did do is we removed the areas that come up front of the main streets, and those are the homes on the, their name to that alleyway between the library and the temple lane, Capitol, and the church.
Church, no, they're kind of a.
But there's several houses there that, that face the side of Town Hall, just before you get to, um, uh, the Mason's Building, and so we removed those homes, and we moved, we moved the Mason's Building, the Sewer Plant, the Legion, and the, uh, the Common Building.
First Parish Chapel.
The Perth Parish Chapel, which, which also doesn't have any frontage on, as of the, uh, but since we were talking about containing commercial space along the frontage, then we've done sense to, uh, include those, so, uh, and those are really the, the two significant changes was the, um, that area behind Town Hall, and then, uh, add, you know, property with the dollar.
Right, so, um, I should have started by explaining to anybody who's just catching up, that the intent of this effort came from the, um, comments during the MBTA three A process, the recognition that our zoning does not explicitly allow mixed use, and that our zoning and that the market conditions for retail, um, are more favorable than for commercial, and that those things could potentially, uh, result in conversions, um, of commercial retail space to other types of, um, uses, and I think the goal here, at least in phase, this phase of things, and we are taking on a general district, uh, which might have been modified to general, and downtown district, this has this, uh, look. So this, the intent here is what's, what is currently, um, today for recent history, um, commercial, residential, commercial or retail spaces, how do we kind of identify that and encourage strongly that continued use, um, while allowing for, um, mixed use with residential, uh, accompanying, uh, commercial and retail, so that's the intent, that's relatively clear. Um, so, uh, the idea here is to create a separate, a new zoning district called the downtown district, um, with the boundaries that you see. Mark, um, so anymore, wait, this is, uh, it seems to me this reflects the general sentiment of the walk, and, uh, comments. Do you have any comments on the board, from the board? So maybe just describe what the walk was, sorry. I think most people were here, actually, like, thank you, but, um, we did do a walk last week with, uh, around this area, looking at each parcel and sort of saying what could be, what is today, um, and we've got a better understanding of what is there today, and, uh, okay, and we did pull out a great, um, comment and conversation. So, um, any com, any other, any comments from the board on this, uh, the district, any comments from the public on the proposed district, and I wanna talk about the use of, right, yeah, just this as a boundary, properties that you feel strongly should be in or out, um.
I, I was at that first, we're talking about the meeting, I'm sorry, Jim Brown.
Yeah.
Uh, it's the tweet happened, and that is, the, uh, I was at the first meeting, so you're talking about the meeting that the, that we had at school. When you said the general consensus of the tone of meeting was, that, uh, we have too much residential, we, uh, it's not only phases residential, you said the.
Yeah, okay, so I think I would make a general statement that we have heard at a number of, uh, a number of times, so why are we doing this? A number of times we have heard that people assume, or explicitly want to, um, protect, to have the commercial red retail on the first floor along the streetscape continue, and not be converted to, um, uh, all residential. And I think the data points there are comments during the MBTA three A zoning, the forum we held at the school, um, and the outcry or comments that we had, that we heard particularly in the public hearings around cargo building, which have been at the historic.
We've actually hit some changes recently, the cargo building going to residential, and then one school street going to retail. So they were actually net zero, for as long as I can recall, or as long as I've been working that out, so I, I would just agree that it's not as big an issue if you're downtown and you own property, we don't have business, it's being managed very well.
This is not a reflection on, um, the currents, you know, it's not a criticism of the current way of doing things, it's not.
No, I don't, we don't, I'm just saying, it's a big change.
Um, and zoning is not, does not, is not the same as economic development, I think, we, we, so just let's stick right now to the, wow. Are there any other, uh, proposed, uh, additions or subtractions from that, John?
Yeah.
Can you just say who you are, just open up and.
Uh, John Harden, fifty-four School Street.
Thank you.
Um, so zoning is one of the few tools we have for future planning, right, to help create the areas of town that we want to be a certain way, that's sort of the goal, the whole idea of zoning, as well as protecting other areas, um, from other sort of work being done, but in any case, um, if we look at this downtown area, there are certain places that historically were commercial or retail, or different than what they are today, and I kind of, I'm looking at this and I'm wondering, gosh, wouldn't it be great in the future if we wanted to encourage more retail in a certain area, wouldn't we want it to be there? For example, the, uh, building that's just up beyond, um, the laughing gull on the left, which I understand is a residential building right now entirely, right, it has, it's the brick one with a bunch of units in it. Uh, it's right in our downtown. It would be a splendid place to have more stores, it would be a great place to have retail on the first floor and units up above, right? Um, but it's excluded on, on this map. I, I, I wonder if the math is, has been made, especially with the changes most recently, to be less, or to be more selective and restrictive, as opposed to be more inclusive and forward thinking. I also wondered about the area, the, the parking lot behind us and, and these buildings. We have a small downtown, that's all within walking distance of our downtown, I can imagine lots of interesting uses that could happen in this area. Maybe not necessarily a mom and pop shop, but something that's not a parking lot. So I hate for our zoning to be restricted, I'm gonna probably talk about this a couple of times tonight, and I'd rather our zoning be forward thinking and inclusive of what we want the town to be.
Why don't we just hear comments and then we, here, I'll respond to them, um, other comments, thank you, John.
What are we commenting now, John?
Just the, the, so John is making, he, just on the map, the, the area.
Just on what we think should be in the map.
Right.
You, you don't, you don't wanna hear anything about what not having, this just, obviously.
Right. We will, we'll get to that.
Because, because the process is not aimed in the right direction, but we can get to that general, because I don't think there's really been uh, any deliberation about what the economics of downtown really are, and exactly what it is that this board thinks that this, this plan is going to do to the downtown, it feels from people, I'm here representing PNA, the Brown thing, in official capacity. We, the town has evolved over time, based on what the town estimated, that really is how all the shops evolved. Originally, when we took the tour, it was mostly residences, like where the Santander Bank is, where Cargo Unlimited was a residence. Um, uh, my cousin Elizabeth's house was a residence, Mr. Dow's house, Crosby's Market was the Brookdale residence. And so as the demand developed in Manchester, they evolved to commercial, my family converted from residential to commercial. And I think, uh, against much resistance at the time, um, people didn't want it then, and then we got, but the demand was there for it, so we had less residential. But now you're talking about taking away the very thing that I think we need for the lifeblood of making the downtown more vibrant, because Manchester, we, uh, there's been no discussion about demographics and what's happening here in this cycle, as we get eight, Manchester is aging, we all know that. And it shrunk a little, not too much, we went from fifty-four hundred, we're out of, we're down a hundred people, but, you know, we see it in everything, and we're worried about retail. I certainly see it at the Manchester Cricket as well, uh, so we're feeling it from every direction, and we need something that will encourage more liveliness downtown. Taking away residential like this, like, you know, all of a sudden making all the residences, we have, I don't know, four units over the KPS savings bank, we have them here and there, and mostly we rent for way below market rents for local people, and now you're gonna make that non-conforming, and that seems like we're moving entirely in the wrong direction.
So I think that, that's not, so that's not the intent, we're actually trying to, uh, allow mixed use, commercial, residential, on some.
You're making, you're.
On some, on some portion of the first floor with residential above, or above if behind.
That's not what the zoning says that we presented, it says that you have.
It is, it is.
Just the boundaries.
This is just the boundary, uh, and then if it's this district, we will allow, so why don't we jump to that, we did hear from John about the idea of adding in the ten Summer Street, let's table that for a minute, I, you have.
I think Adam Zager, one comment on the boundary, Adam Zager, twenty-one Union Street, I had one comment on the boundary, um, which is, I saw that you didn't, you chose not to include me.
But you're not, you don't reside at, yeah, just.
I own the owner of twenty-one.
But you, uh, live. Side is plus.
That's correct, I own twenty-one Union Street, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, own that property, and also, um, thirteen Elm Street, which is also in the district, it's owned by a family entity. So, our, our, we saw that you didn't include the self-storage building, and I, I understand it's, it's not really primary downtown, but it is non-conforming, it's there, it's existing, it's in bad condition, it's like crying out for something to happen, is, is ever putting that in.
We didn't leave that on the walk, and, um, I think our planners recommendations that we leave it out for right now, so we can, as a board, discuss that, we, we did hear that on the clock, thank you. Um, anything else on the boundaries, and then when, to clarify, we'll get to what, what we're talking about, so, um.
We'll touch on, we thought we should leave that off.
Uh, um, you should leave, uh, we, we can go through the comments, we only have a few, um, of properties, you know, so the last. And, I think, the last one is, uh, on the corner of Seating Cabin.
Correct.
And that's only in the MBTA overlay district, so that property owner can file under that overlay district, which allows the higher density than what current zoning allows. Um, so, I mean, that, uh, property owner has other non-commercial options there. Um, so I think, uh, the idea here is to, uh, submit a very, um, uh, targeted new zoning district that just targets kind of the commercial, existing commercial core. And because that's what we were hearing, is how, how can we improve and enhance that, because we've had some series of empty buildings, we have some new buildings opening up, as you mentioned, so let's first target the, the area that we have, and then enhance that, and Manchester apparently has always had some areas where everything's filled, and then again, you have a few empty, and then things still up again, so the idea of what we heard is that we want some a little more vibrant, a little more, and have a continuous use.
You know, we, we, the thought process was that that building, that the MBT options, the MBTA options, while they're there, they're, they're still fairly restricted, it'll be, be under five units, uh, so, I know it's important, because I think, I think for the board to consider, because if the intent is to foster business in town, the, the thought would be that you potentially could have some new business on the first floor there and residential above, which would be sort of consistent with, you know, creating a more vibrant downtown, and it abuts the.
Yeah, okay, so let's, uh, let's cut to, um, we've, the, the, um, board's comments on the two properties that we were just, that had come up in, one was the, um, property on, uh, Clapham Street, um, to include that. That's, uh, to the point of town. We have, uh, corner of Chappan and, uh, B Street, uh, I'll, I'll just start by saying that is, uh, in the, it's in the, um, whole family district, so it does have, um, helping, it's a, so you can do single family, you can do, um, whole family, and it does seem to me that it's in the walking for a class, but, anybody disagree with that, want, wanna argue to keep it in, put it in?
Yeah, my word to the fact that, I mean, in part with reason that.
Let's just talk about Clapham, this, this one right here, this right here.
What I was gonna say is, the boundaries got redrawn because of existing residential, right, and there is an intensely residential, like in the area. And, um, actually, the butters there, there was quite a lot of concern about that turning into anything other than residential use. So I, I think, and it's pretty far away from all the commercial uses, if you're working on a real, all the existing properties are residential.
Um, anybody on the board wanna argue for putting it in? The, put in the boundary, that's at this, where my cursor is here. Okay.
Get towards the old store, but.
Yes. Okay, I'm hearing nothing, and then, how about this, uh, ten Summer Street, um, I don't think there's a harm in putting that in, and it does, I think John makes a good case, um, it's recently.
Well, that's a, that is a single person claim, putting all the residential back of it.
Oh, that's true, that's, that's.
So I think we've already, but it, which you can't do, I think it's gonna be all, I prefer that to be all, I think John Harden is correct.
Yeah, like John's point about forward thinking, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it one way, I don't think it's likely that.
Yeah, so it's simply sort of changing is not very high, but.
What's the ownership?
It doesn't, uh.
Well, somebody, somebody kind of, John, which buildings can you refer, these, I said, it's right here.
Just that, on the street front.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Problem is that.
This side is the bigger thing.
Yeah. Far as the whole.
I mean, the, the obvious thinking behind it is this side has a continuous string of, of retail.
Right.
I mean, they're not terribly active, but they are retail, and streets are always more successful when they have both sides being retail. And this was the original site of, um, the hall, who was that?
The boarding post, the hall.
Yeah, which was a civic building, of some sort, right?
How would they work considering that it's currently not retail at, at all, it's residential, I think.
Correct.
It would have to be.
In the future, and their rental, you would do.
But you have, some of these are residential only, right, have one, two, three, these three right here, the residential.
Yeah, it's.
Residential units in this.
Changing the zoning doesn't change the use.
No, I'm just saying, they're residential now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's less about what it is now.
Yeah.
It's about what we imagine it might be, a hundred years, I don't.
Right, but don't forget, we can also, we can also change the boundaries in ten years, whatever, so, okay, that's what we're gonna assume.
I guess I would just say, I feel like this is a great first step, and, um, I have heard your comments through the past, the MBTA zoning, and, and you come from a great perspective, and I really appreciate the forward thinking and your emphasis on the planning and design and, and expanded residential. But there are lots of other perspectives too, and as a board, we really try and take in everybody's, and this is our first step. Um, one, we look forward to presenting in town meeting and, and incorporating, uh, a wide range of, of residents views.
Um, so, uh, I think that, that we have to think a little bit more, given that that's a parcel, so I'm gonna table that for right now.
Which one?
This, uh, with the ten Summer Streets. Awesome, yeah, um, I'm, we have a lot to do tonight, so I wanna, I'm gonna, um, jump to actually what, uh, just as a way of summarizing, we catch, hopefully, people up in the mid. Um, and that, uh, just, uh, really briefly, what are we trying to do? Um, and that is, we're, as I said, residents seem to expect that the downtown have, I think the word expects is not so strong. That was certainly the sentiment we heard from sixty people who came to the forum.
I did, yeah.
And, um.
I do.
Uh, in, uh, June, so, um, the people don't expect change to all residential, um, that's just my, I think, that, that's the sense that our consultant reflected, um, in, when she reported out to us. Um, I think the cargo building redevelopment proposal for all residential was, um, has been, uh, caused some, some nation, and, uh, downtown many, um, initiatives, um, are uh, working really hard to try to promote commercial and retail, I don't think the Jaber or the dip is, is actively seeking to convert to residential, it's, it's, it's in support of this, uh, and the master plan also talks about a vibrant downtown. Uh, so we hope to try to create something that will preserve, can say the, just commercial and retail use, it's not, not any particular commercial and retail use, um, and to respond to the financial pressures for residential conversions, and allow mixed use, so that means uh, commercial or residential, or, or retail on the first floor, or a portion of the first floor, one of the things we need to talk about, with rest, that allow residential apps behind, like they're doing at, uh, Seventh Central and above. Um, and so the idea here is that we would have mixed use, we'd have resident that, um, that could, could convert the, the bank to something that has a chop in the front, and, uh, residential in the back and above, um, and that, uh, we would get a combination of things. Um, so that's the intent, um, and, um.
So you're going to a lot, because I'm sorry to interrupt, but you circulated something in the last, when we did the water, and it was, looked like it was eliminating all the residential uses.
No, no.
So you're talking about allowing residential uses on the second floor?
Yes, and or behind, that's a little. Behind, right, right.
Right, okay, that's not what was circulated.
Yeah, it is, that's what it is.
Okay, that's why we're here, and, um, the, what would be required for a special permit is if you want to have residential on the first floor, so you want on the street front.
Is there, is there something in writing that, with this? Is there, is there something in writing that, but this is just as an example, residentially, it's recently.
Let me, let, we'll public comment in a minute, let's kind of walk ourselves through. Um, so, this is what we're trying to do, review downtown district, the exact area, we're pretty close. Um, this, I did this for the select board, so, we're not having a watch bar, sorry. Um, it would allow mixed use, that's a combination of commercial, retail and residential. And it would encourage the preservation and perhaps the expansion of commercial retail uses. With a special permit to convert to residential on the first floor. Uh, so, the other thing I wanted to just clarify is what is, um. Allowed today, sharing, so I just think it's important that we all get levels up here. We all, we've been thinking about this without, a lo- a long time, so. There's in that, not gonna go through this in great detail, but, um, right now, what is the, um. Proposed downtown district is a part of the general district but zoning. And so it, um, it was bigger. So it allows a number of things, so, not gonna go through the entire table, but this is how you determine. Today, what is allowed. Um, you look at this table, it's table four point two in the zoning, you will find out what district a parcel is. And then you read down the columns, so a single family house is allowed in the current. In throughout the general district, of which this proposed downtown is a part, a two-family. Uh, the conversion of a one-family into a two-family, and the conversion of. Existing dwelling into a three-family, and there's some notes in both cases and things like that. Um, dwelling with four units would have a pla- a special apartment from the planning board. Um, or residential conservation cluster, which is irrelevant, because you can play fingers. Um, so, and then a whole set of community uses and red, retail uses and so forth are also allowed. And it's unclear whether you can do a combination of these uses, so that's one of the things we wanna fix. Um, even though today we have a many buildings that have mixed use, a combination of a, uh, vertical. Use with residential above, it's unclear in the zoning, so just clarifying that is a change we need to make. Um, so I just wanted to, and that's how one finds out today what is allowed, uh, in your. Property, not just the general district, but throughout the town. So, let's, um, talk about, Mark, you wanna, um, give us a summary of. Where we are, or do you want me to pull it up to, um, the proposed draft?
Yeah, we can, we can pull it up. And so, the, the draft have. Two problems, one is for downtown district that we proposed, and the general district. And that, that way you can go in through it, you can see that there, where the differences are.
Okay, so downtown district. Is the proposed district, doesn't exist today. Um, and the general district is what, uh, the debt ought to be, and almost the entire downtown district is a subset of. This one area without, it's, so, um. So the proposal, you wanna walk us through the.
Yes, the proposal, um. Um, so the first. Uh, the downtown district, so I had a planning board special permit for the, um, residential. Single and two-family. Um, I did also just discuss this with Catherine today, she, she actually recommended against the, um. Want to do more multi-family to promote more outing. Keeping the commercial in the front at some time, but, but having more multi, but, um. So that's again some to discuss, but, uh. But the other conversion that we have, the way it's worded, complete planning board special permits. In the downtown district, um. That's what we have. Who here, and we took out the residential cluster conversion of the state.
Well, why don't we just walk us, so we can kind of understand where we are in its entirety, so. Um, the now will get comments from the board and we, we'll look at.
So, um. So the. Under the community facilities, uh, most things are, are, yes. The first four item. And we get to. Garbage, um, traffic, and hospital, nursing care and sanatorium. Uh, we, we discussing that separately to change that. Give you private clubs of the same cemeteries, you would not permit. I mean, but then, uh, public facility building, permit. Then. The other thing that would be a little different, bring down nursery uses for horticulture. Horticulture, it definitely, you know, planning board special permit instead of, uh, by right. Those are the. You can see, as we have. Um, under commercial uses. You can see the first, um, businesses, professional businesses, doctors would be the same. Medical building from up to three doctors would be permitted, uh. General retail courses permitted. Several of the other things, indoor recreational blocks of facilities would become a planning board special permit. Um, as opposed to being not permitted, um.
So it's like if you want to have a yoga studio type thing.
Yeah, that's, yes. And then, uh, yacht storage, construction services would allow in the general, but you really don't want that in. Downtown core area, and shellfish, we had a discussion about, um. Or in processing last time, decided that if you have a planning board special permit on that. Don't make any changes to wind, energy, green pond, true, power, all stay the same. Car painting, garages, but also stay the same. Not allow helicopter landing pad. Allow marijuana businesses, adult entertainment, that, those would all stay the same, not permitted. And their accessory uses, we keep, um. Almost all the accessory uses are the same.
At least that's. The families versus.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so the idea here is that, um, downtown district. Is subset of the general district and. And then we get into the regulations, which I think what's really important, um.
Before we get off the use chart.
Yeah.
We're speaking with Catherine today, we felt it was important to add a use. Or mixed use line in the, in the use chart to. To, uh, for mixed use, to allow commercial use to win residential, um, and, uh. So.
Add mixed use?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
How many units?
Well, that, it's, it's, doesn't, this wouldn't. Density requirement in the line. But it would, but as opposed to today where either it's interpreted that you can't have. This would at least allow for the next to the use.
So maybe we'll go in.
To the first floor.
Wait, let's, let's, I just wanna keep going through the, sorry to keep cutting off, but I wanna make sure we get some of these mixed. Down to another commercial, uh, commercial. You know, something here. Okay. Some version of that, and it's gonna be, yes, and it's sort of, and the current, I would say it's not, it, it, it's not. Exists all over the place, but it's a. It's subject to, uh, some sort of litigation or something.
Yeah, arbitrary.
Arbitrary, yes, put it that way. Yeah, T V D, whatever, okay, um. And so then, can I, should I scroll back to the mixed use, and I know you kind of tells names, let's hold that aside.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 um. So, uh. These are the, um, dimensional requirements in the, um. Uh, general districts, so this is, but you tried to walk us through this, Mark, minimum.
Uh, the minimum lot area, uh, currently is six thousand, I'm not proposing to change that. Uh, frontage and the lot width would stay the same as well. Um, the general district has a front setback of five feet and a side setback of ten feet, um. A rear setback, ten feet, I would, uh, recommend that you eliminate the front and side setbacks. Any properties, have no setbacks in the existing, uh. Area that we're, what was in the downtown district, they're right at the back of sidewalk. Um, and they could put right up to each other, so, um, that is a traditional downtown outfit, no. It's, it's that type of, uh, of construction, so, that's what I would recommend there.
Okay, and then the lot coverage.
Lot coverage, um.
And P D, and this, and this is our recommendation.
Right, and, um. So, um, so currently it's, uh. Coverage fully dependent the general district and, um, seventy percent of the whole lot within, uh, impervious. Which would be building plus parking and patios, other things, um. So, I had put down seventy percent by structures and ninety percent by, uh, maximum lot coverage.
So that's, just to be clear, if you have, um. A thousand or a lot, how much, this is the amount that it covered by structures and by impervious services. And I think that the seventy percent by structures is very fine. Um, now recognize that some of our buildings, most of that, probably, but not that many, we actually look at them on. And there's the opportunities for, um. And this to. Make the case that, you know, the existing there is seventy percent, therefore they should be seventy percent, but I think if you take. Um, parcels that have, uh, like that, significant parking right now. There's still parking requirements that they have to meet, but, um, you know, you guys. Seventy percent block, uh, coverage by structure is very fine, my.
Yes, it is, these are two high. But someone presented, there's a lot of downtown areas, uh, maybe ones that are a little more urban, but it was. Something to stand forward and have a discussion about, uh, because we are, board density will help. Uh, bring more people and bring more back.
Yes, maybe we'll talk about that and see. Um, okay, and then let's, uh, height requirements?
Yeah, I think last, last meeting, it was determined that we weren't gonna really increase the height. Still, there's, large, I've tried to increase the height, in town, down bounds to allow a little greater height.
If you take away residential on the first level, allowing the height may allow the building to structure the town, it's only worth the spend money. And maybe to, to make up for that. And it's a very, it's a very, it's a very.
Okay, um, so height is another thing we need to think about, um, and then do you want just, we wanna talk about accessory structures or down?
Hmm, yeah, I mean, it, it, um.
It's like, accessory structures are essentially. Similar, but, um, it could be right up against the. Um, we had parking, it's, uh, parking, we're not gonna talk about hotels right now. So parking would remain the same as like, as per at this moment.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um. Okay, so, just to summarize, the proposal would allow, uh. All of the same, almost all of the same uses as. We currently have, the, but if it's residential on the first floor, it's unclear, as it's probably written, that that would be the. The special permit is for residents on the first floor, or conversions, um, right now you have it written as conversions to.
Well, that's how the, the conversion. There's one, uh, in my, in my, I mean. Everything, the youth table. It's, uh, all, all the different uses, it's, uh, I think it's easier, I've got it to ask. That's either in the original. District. I could vote for it as a separate, uh, article that gets voted separately, you know, as part of the path to. Pre-game district in town meeting.
Um, okay, comments from the board? I, I mean, I thought, there's some comments about, uh, future planning. Um, certainly what I knew at the forum and, and subsequently. Is what people want is for us to codify essentially what exists, because they would like more. Of what downtown is going forward into the future, so I think that. And that was pretty, pretty sensible when people simply go written, cause all of them, and mixed use wasn't there, and. Um, the other time I might have made is that, Jim, I, looking at this document. The first four items in residential. And the, uh, the addition to section four point two, uh, conversion of first floor commercials. Was in response to your comments, actually, so I think that these is the Jim Brown.
Let's just, let's look the board to.
We were, we were talking at the time, at a prior meeting, and I don't remember the. Uh, we were talking about perhaps mandating commercial space on the first floor. And you objected strenuously to that, and I think rightly, and so what this represents. Is the flip that you suggested, which is rather than mandating commercial, you allow it by right. Um, in the mixed use context, and you do the residential as a special permit, so it's still permitted. But it requires with you.
Yeah, my, my, I, that's all I'd say, what I said was, or what I meant, was if somebody wanted to do. Residential on the first level, instead of just saying you can't. Make it special part. My interpretation of a residential one two four, that off, none of. My interpretation of a residential one through four, that none of these are retail of this, right? So what you're saying is we were allowing in the general district, that if someone had a single family. Uh, wanted to do a single family, or someone wanted to have a two-family dwelling, or they wanted to convert a single to a two. On, or an existing dwelling of a three dwelling, uh, with no increasing gross floor area, we would allow that in general district. Now, all of a sudden, this has nothing to do with retail of this, so it's first four, all of a sudden now you're saying, no, we're not gonna allow them to do that, we have a serious housing. I, I sit on like, uh, government, or Fair Sport, Marshal Realities, and I've done this all the time, but we know we have a serious.
There's a misunderstanding.
I think we have. And I, I think, don't forget, we're, this is a draft. And it's not, it may, clearly it's not quite clear what we're trying to get across, we need to.
I, I have the same interpretation, I'm really confused.
Yeah.
And very worried, and you residentialize it right, what you, what you drafted.
If you guys said you were gonna allow second floor residential, that's right.
Yeah, I.
It says here, it's right.
Yeah, this is right, so we're hearing that this, that, and that's what Kathy said.
Which is why really we're.
Right, so we should change that. I think we're hearing that. The feedback, whether we agree with this, that, you know, is to allow the, 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 the special permit is only for residential on the first floor. Is that what I'm, that just the board agree with me on that?
Yes.
Yes, I'm just, uh, assume you're not sure.
Yes, so what that means is by right residential on this floor. Is that correct?
Yes, so if we were to say.
What about by right business on the second level? The business, yeah, of course, yes.
I think we need to change these, this use table to.
Yeah, what do you, how many units?
Add.
Add a. A residential. Line.
Yeah.
That allows multi-family. By right.
I just say.
And you allow this special type like downtown, however you define, allow that by right in the downtown, yes. So that you don't, these other uses are given as allowed. Multi-family, if they're a mixed use, right, with residential, it's allowed, but. Then you just, you definitely should reset some of those brands. First floor, off the front. For a commercial, but become kind, uh. That's a sort of saving.
And then one more point, I sat on the road in Manchester for a few years, forty-five years, uh, A by. Definitely gives sense to me, multi-family dwelling with not more than four dwellings. So are you saying four units or less? Downtown not, four units or less is not.
For what?
It might, I don't know how to, probably, maybe one of the attorneys in my room. Multi-family dwelling is not more than four dwelling or less, but if that allows, that's a lot.
That, that right there, it said no.
Yeah, it says no, you can't do anything under, that, my interpretation of that is anything under four.
But what about five, six, if you have the parking?
That's another question, I think, I think. Right, so we have, we have four units, I mean, over, over the K D S savings here. And so this would say that's, that would render this, this law would render them non-conform. And so.
They're currently not.
They're not conforming now, what's happening?
They're not conforming now.
I understand, but it makes it even more, it doesn't, it, it's even more of a burden, because it raises a. Used to build up and forth between a fungus and residential apartment on the second floor seamlessly depending on the demand. There was, you know, for some time, the demand for office space obviously was greater, and so lots of the second floor. Units were office, and then over time, as that demand has dissipated, we moved to residential.
No, I think that's great, so.
No, don't take that away from us, to be.
So I think we have a drafting problem, not an intent problem, right, and thank you for bringing this all up, because. We, we've gotta fix the way this is.
Yeah.
The intent is to allow exactly what you're talking about. Residential is allowed by right on the upper floors, so is office and commercial on the upper floors.
Yeah.
So what we don't want is a cargo situation where we have a, a prime retail spot in the downtown converted to houses. Because that affects the commercial viability of the rest of the.
We, we're, honestly. The grounds are intensely interested in having a vibrant, yeah, for lots of different reasons, starting with art history down there and. Basically, it's what we've been doing for a long time, and we understand that it's important to the town, it's. The center of town, it's part of what makes living here nice.
Right.
So we definitely like to do that, and we wanna do that, but, um, obviously it takes money to do that, and we're always looking for ways to pay for things. And so it's good to have flexibility. The big problem downtown is obviously parking, that's always really, we're not, we don't talk about this, is parking is the big constraint. That works, that's the constraint that really.
So we wanna deal with that also.
And so that's something I think would be important for us to start talking about now, in terms of.
Well, I just wanna make sure we all agree at least, and if we have it properly, can we explain it?
Yes.
The, the thing about, about the, the downtown is that zoning isn't going to, it isn't going to make anything happen. But currently, the way our zoning bylaw is written, it prevents things, it's not in, on the downtown's best interest, it to a single family house.
What does it prevent now?
Basically, it prevents, it does not guarantee commercial uses on the first floor. One of the.
It doesn't mandate commercial use, not down here, it doesn't mandate.
That's right, well, with.
And I, if you look at what Ed's line, he, he purchased a building, he, um, wrote insurance, so that he could do something through the retail. He just purchased a roofed building, he's gonna do something through the interior, he just added a retail space, which was. And we're doing the same thing, we worked very, very hard to have a diversified portfolio.
I mean, it's not making that easy to do, that's.
I think we have a drafting problem, we've identified that, I think we, um, uh, this isn't a criticism or a, uh. One way or the other of, um, the existing, um, efforts, which, um, and we, I think the board recognizes that's us the downtown improvement. Demon, that's, I always speak. Then there, that this is a multiprompt effort, it is zoning, it is, um, other, but, but let me tell you, when the cargo building was presented to. Historic, or I'm not sure which meeting, because it's been a, several, Mr. Zager said mixed use isn't allowed, that was his. And, no, no, you did, you said it wasn't allowed, and I, I, I commend the new, I know it's sort of crossed that bridge. But at one meeting, you said, it's my interpretation that mixed use isn't allowed, and so if people are coming to Manchester and saying mixed use isn't allowed, this is something we need to fix. And say it needs to be allowed so that people aren't confused, and we're still confused, we have a drafting problem, not an intent problem necessarily.
Just add mixed use.
Right, you said mixed use.
We have to do this, or we have to do that.
And then the second piece is that doesn't matter, I think, of opinion about how strongly we encourage or require, and we have tool, I think we've heard. That residential should, on the first floor, shouldn't be outright prohibited, we've heard that, and I think there's agreement, and as Sandy said. The, uh, the fix was to have, um, a, uh, special permit for residential on the first floor, I just sort of. Tried to write something that was a little clear, I'm sure helps, uh, go ahead, John.
So I think there's a real, uh, communication problem. Because you guys went through this whole use chart, right? My head was about to explode from what you guys just, just went through. And then, because I heard at some point in the last few weeks what the intent was, that you guys were done, and what I was reading. Was the exact opposite, and would have been a disaster for this town, then you guys as a board got a chance to, to make comments, and no one brought that up. As if you guys didn't recognize that any housing in this district would have been by, by special permit. That's what that chart said, that would have been, and, uh, apps, I couldn't, I can't tell you strongly enough. That would destroy our downtown, because no one would touch it. No, no developer in their right mind would come to do a single unit, if they have to come to this board to do a stuff. So how did we get here, that, that this was, was a draft with that lack of understanding, I, I, it makes me really worried.
Well, I guess.
One, one, I'm, I'm, um, the, the, the other thing, I think this has also been, been expressed, and I feel very strongly about this, I will continue to say it at every meeting. The issue with this town is not a vibrant retail district. The retail district lacks vibrancy because we don't have enough people anymore, the town, to make it vibrant, right? We're going, we're trending in the wrong direction, as a town, not like quickly, we're not dying, right? But we need housing. It's not one unit here, let me, I love that, he's doing a, a great job, but three units out of our entire town is not gonna make any difference. We need to be bold in what we do from a housing perspective, I was helping the Affordable Housing Trust for, for a bunch of years, trying to create a single unit of affordable house. How many we made? I know I'm being a bit of a jerk here, but it's true.
Well, I'm gonna turn that around and say, where are the developers coming to this task?
Because our zoning is too restrictive.
Well, not for affordable housing.
Okay, let's, let's, let him finish, let's, let him.
It's the only way, unfortunately, and I, I, I wish there were a different way in town to do it, which is what I'm hoping one day this town will tap.
So one of the things, I, I'm just, I, you know, it's a don't respond, but I, I, I do think that this town is very, uh, change, reluctant to change. You know, for God's sakes, putting in a test, or it was like, we think we were putting in a hazard site, um, you know, and so I think that this is the challenge we face. We wanna put something forward that will pass. And there's different opinions about additional housing, or about density, or about, and so we, that's. And I have little of the opinion that we're gonna have to. If we are too bold, we may not succeed, but I may be wrong in that.
One last comment, multi-family must be allowed in this town somewhere. We must have more than four units allowed in this town somewhere, besides forty feet.
Right, um, okay, I, I have a question for John, could you help me understand? So, let's look at that M and T bank building, and that whole property. So, would you be okay with? M and T is the bank across from the laughing hole, the, you know, drive through. So. Would you be okay with that being snapped down and having one single family home built there?
Well, no, let, let me be clear.
The current zoning allowed.
Yeah, I, let, let me, let me be clear, I'm not opposed to the intent of what you guys are doing, at all. I want you guys to go further with. I wanna, yes, protect our, our downtown, of course, but I want by right. By right, to be able to do units above our retail, just like you, you guys have said, by right.
That's totally the objective.
Yes, that's not what the draft said, and I, I almost lost it when, when I saw that, because that was exactly the opposite to what we've been talking about, okay?
And, 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 and M and T, that's a great example, um. We wouldn't contemplate, the economics of that building would not make us even contemplate changing it to a residence, it's just. You know, it's, it's a good building in terms of income for us, and a residence there on the railroad tracks, to me, it just wouldn't make any sense. It would have been, it would have been a good opportunity if the zoning allowed to have more of a building there and maybe five units above it. Buy one, build one apartments, is probably what should have happened.
And, and I think we would say probably, and, and to your comment about the railroad test, it, many terrible hotels used to be a restaurant, right?
Yes.
Yes, there was a harbor side, harbor side restaurant.
That was right.
Right, it turned into a single family home, one big single family home.
Okay, so let's, um, get back to the, I think we're, uh, let's hear from a couple of other moments, yeah, go ahead, yeah, thank you.
My name is Swanson, I've lived at four beach feet for thirty-six years, and, uh, first of all, I'd like to say, I have some brief comments, about two minutes. Um, first of all, I want to acknowledge the planning board, the volunteers, and I appreciate that, you know, as part of all the weird stuff, no kidding. But I've come here tonight to express my opinion, on the record, in this public forum, to say, I think you've lost your leg. First, transparency is incredibly low. The meeting packet for transplanted work news not posted until three P M. And the meeting packet does include the parking bylaws that you didn't discuss tonight. The proposed downtown zoning app is not on the town's public website. So if you town administrator, uh, Boletta, and director of land management resume, the town must do a better job at informing the citizens. Second, the effort to create a new downtown zone ostensibly started with this M B T A zoning project and the June meeting. What you mean, they quote, identified an approach for creating, sustaining, and more vibrant downtown. None of the points highlighted by the consultant suggested reducing parking. Prohibiting senior housing. Or discouraging residential uses. Yeah, you, the planning board, have somehow come forward with a plan to do all three. Now Manchester is the only town in eastern Massachusetts that has a planning board that approves driveways. And now you propose increasing the minimum driving width twenty-five percent. Which will obviously reduce Manchester's already all-too-limited parking. Next. The planning board has aimed to propose to town citizens that senior residential housing cannot be located in Manchester's downtown core. Does the planning board believe that seniors will make downtown less vibrant? And finally, the planning board is seeking to propose an outcome in town in. That simple residential uses are somehow outta, out of bounds without special permit. In a part of town that has always had single-family residences, no parking, no seniors, no residences without special permit. What's next, planning board, what's the intent, what are you trying to accomplish as you rush forward with your rezoning efforts? In closing, the residents of the town deserve more transparency in these misguided efforts to rezone downtown Manchester, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, other comments, um, let's see, anybody online, anybody online wanna make any comments? Okay, well, I think we still have some work to do, um, why don't we talk a little bit more about, um. The proposal for parking for the downtown district, um, Mark, you thought a little bit about that?
Well, we were talking about. Excluding the post-commercial uses from having a few requirements, but, uh. It got originally said we would maintain, there's still the residential. So if you put in two units, it needs to provide three spaces. So that is what we had discussed, um, originally, uh, many downtown, uh, even under M B T A, only require one space per, per unit. Because you're in downtown area, you can simply walk the places, units are oftentimes smaller, and you also have access to the, um, the M B T A. So, um, that is something that we've talked about discussing tonight, whether there would be support for that. In, in trying to, um, reduce in the downtown district parking requirement to one space per unit.
From one and a half.
From one and a half.
Okay, um, comments from the board about, um, having, uh, zero space to require for a res, for a commercial. Uh, unit, and then, let's start with that. And, um. What do you think, Peter, you're saying? If you have.
I'd be curious to know comparatively how this works with other similarly sized.
I'd be curious to know comparatively how this works with other similarly sized downtown areas and commercial, and whether or not. Reduction in parking does incentivize the economic growth in the area. What's it done to that versus housing, if we can look to any examples, uh, where should we be looking?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, but what has happened here in the past when someone changes and they don't have parking. Uh, to come to make differences, you know, I don't, well. Parking, parking is a valid. That you, you know, when you're developing something, you have to make sure you're going to deliver parking to your customers. So, um, certainly not having parking, so take a look at Collins. That that's a highly problematic spot, but very, very successful and kind of be over time has become kind of a critical little gathering spot for the downtown. It brings a lot of life to downtown, it's very successful. It has zero parking there. We, um, and when it, and it only was allowed to be there, uh, because it's always, it's been a restaurant for so long, it predated zoning, so it was grandfathered in. And so we had, I think, a sixty or seventy seat cup that was grandfathered in, so we were able to keep it. But otherwise, you know, if we convert it to something else, if it became, you know, part of the stock exchange law, you could never go back under the current zoning construct. So we don't have the parking for it, so those types of buildings, that whole building has no parking, eleven beach street has no parking.
That's so that's precisely, that's precisely. Yeah, that's, or or the place they used to be on seven central. They had no parking, uh, there's a few spaces at the time, but. Yeah, but it's not pleasant enough for the restaurant, and that's precisely how a lot of downtowns are, you have long street parking. You happen to have one here, the high speed parking lot behind here. So, um. There is other large parking spaces that people can park to that and walk. Um, I've never had a problem going to Collins, I don't, we come up, how it works, you know?
Yeah, but let's, just to your point, if the stock exchange were to exchange, were to convert to a restaurant. Under the current zoning, they would, you would be, and you would have large construction, you would need either variance or somehow to provide parking. And so our proposal, Mark suggesting that for the commercial portion of that development. You would need zero parking spaces. Now, if you put residential above, the question is, um, under current zoning. You would need one and a half spaces per residential use. And so the the question is, should that be decreased to one? Or I know there's arguments for zero, but, um, again, we want to see this be successful, and I, we, on the other side of this, we have people who come in. And argue for two spaces per residential unit, um, on, with some frequency. So it's, you know.
We're we're fortunate, we're fortunate to have off street parking for all our residential. Um, our leases allow for one spa for our residential.
Yeah, so if you were to rebuild under today's zoning, if you were in the downtown district. You would need one and a half, so the question that Mark is asking us to to contemplate is whether we should reduce that to one.
I think anyway.
So, uh, that's the board, you know, as we put forth together a draft.
I mean, I believe, because I hope if you.
So that as we put together a draft, that's something that, uh. Um, certainly, it sounds like this group here is saying one, I'm sure we'll hear from others as we.
Well, Russell's saying the market's going to demand more.
Right.
I'm sorry?
The market, you can you say the market would demand that more parking space be required?
The market?
Yeah.
Well, it's right, I I actually did the permit, though the the Crosby's market all the way down.
No, no, we don't. The residential market.
Oh, yeah, the residential, oh, yes. It's hard to rent an apartment to somebody if you're on the market space floor, it's a real driver, I think, so.
But that's not a zoning question, that's a, that's an economic and a business development question.
Yes.
The question before us is, as we put forward a zoning change, what should your minimum be? If you want to have ten parking spaces and have a space for it and meet the other requirements, that's fine. Um, but this is a minimum that will be required as a, you know, without exemption, variance.
Add a unit.
Yeah.
In downtown, and we're talking about the downtown, new downtown.
The downtown district.
That's it, yeah. I think anyway. I would say you might want to consider having only a one spot requirement for a one bedroom or studio. That would probably work and may encourage some housing.
Okay.
Sarah, Sarah?
Oh, John, go ahead.
For a person looking to buy a property or to develop a a property. First thing that they do is they look at the the site plan and what they could lay out for a building and parking. And reducing the, um, requirement to one space per unit is the most important thing. To help of, uh, an owner or a developer maximize that. That is the single thing, like, I know that Rancho Street, people, uh, don't think of that as a good example, but the entirety of the development on that street. Was made possible by the city allowing that district to have one parking space per.
Where was it again?
Rancho Street.
Rancho Street. Not that we want to be Ran- Ran-
It's not a vibe in that aspect.
Not that, not that we.
It's like, it's like an economics.
Hold on, it's not that we want to be Rancho Street, but it encouraged the development, whatever scale it is, yeah. It will help to encourage it.
Okay.
Um, one more, I just want to come aside from, because I just know, um, speaking for the basis, which I know that I can do. Moving from as of right, charitable to philanthropic use in the general district, that's going to raise, really raise and.
In the downtown district, and now we've excluded the Masons from.
Well, since in the general district.
But that's today, that's what's today.
Oh, that's today, yeah.
So that right hand column is what is there today, is today's general don't.
That's a great way to lay that out, so you can see what we've what we have.
Right, we need to clarify with stakeholders, exactly, so that you know what has to be. What is, what is, so in the general district today, is that right?
I didn't notice that, so the region of the Masons are gone as of right, it's actually.
The grandfather.
Sarah, can I ask you a question for John?
Sure.
What, going to zero, make it better still?
Yes, however.
Really?
However, that would really become a a marketing issue for for the owner of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
There are properties, there are projects that have done that. In Cambridge, for example, where people walk and no one really wants to own a car, right? Um, also. Yeah, al- also, I believe there are some projects on other north shore in places like us that have successfully done that, if they are directly adjacent to a train. Which we are.
And in fact, state law says for the ADUs. Yeah, the A D U within a half mile train station does not require parking. So that's state law telling us.
So to to Mr. Russell, in that particular case, you've got somebody looking for a a space, and but you're not providing any parking, it's not required by. Right, what is that? So it helps us not to have it mandated by the town, and if we can find. Not having be any space. Space, if you, if the town comes to us and says you can generate another apartment. And not require a space or not need a space, um, we may be able to find a tenant. I have a handful, I, it's a few tenants that don't drive, but and then, you know, they go work openly, work on mix, so they're up on the training. And now it's a great, uh, parking community. Uh, most tenants want a spot, right, so so, um, but that's our, that's our issue, right? So it's different, you telling me that I don't need to have one when I created, wait, make it easier for me to create one. Now there's the space there, that doesn't mean I'm not going to offer a spot for that, that I do, that I can leave, right?
Yeah.
And so on.
It also doesn't mean that they won't have a car.
That's right.
They might have a car.
It's a practical problem, where does that person park if they're not, you're not mandated to have a, they'll park wherever they'll.
Yeah, and that's what we hear. Where will they park? They'll take my space.
Something I have, uh, witnessed in other towns is if a project is within five hundred feet of a public parking area. Like this parking lot back here, they do let you offset some of the parking requirements because of that, assuming they'll park there.
Oh. All right, I think we have heard some good input, we need to tidy it this up to. Clarify it, uh, we heard you, John, about getting our material, we, it's usually our practice to get the packet out. Thursdays, but, um, so we heard you on that, and I think, um. I know I didn't have a chance to to leave all everything either, so it's both the board and the public, so thank you for raising that, um. And, um. You want to talk about the other uses, um, the, uh, you, uh, and fast food restaurants.
Yeah.
As a what if in the downtown, I think, um.
Yeah, I think that should be, that's the target, that would be, about, because I had a question about some of our existing restaurants. And the fact that there was probably more people who down, and so most of the definitions that I've looked at the last few days. Re- related to fast food restaurants, talk about, uh, take, you know, you're predominantly food packaged to go, well, that was probably like that. So isn't the goal, I go there for lunch, and then, and, um, of course, one who has this, how is this?
I think, yeah.
Okay, but, so it's more about the drive up and right, we, we, which was what's really objectionable. So we have a definition, but it's not actually current, so.
Okay, so we need to fix that.
So we need to fix that. So that's, that's, uh, that's something that's there. Uh, the other one we had talked about is comparison in. And, um, so I'll be going with, uh, yes, we did, so, um.
So just, yeah, which which area has the most objectionable? I assume the drive through car, but is takeout windows that are not drive through? Is that been, is that been a duty should do?
Here, no, that, where?
Actually, it does, it's just one big.
Right, so, no. Basically. Drive. I think it's the sort of McDonald's.
Yeah. I don't know, where you're holding them here, right, in the, on the railroad track, and maybe bred it back at the Happy Donuts, they tricked the traffic just back some, you know.
So, yeah, it's also a traffic.
It is, actually.
Yeah. So I think there's probably.
It's not really conducive downtown.
Right, but maybe, but maybe. But maybe we're trying to drive through.
That's what I'm saying is.
Or drive through window, I.
Different definition for a takeout window and a drive through window. Just that, I agree. A lot of takeout windows, a lot of takeout windows popped up during COVID.
Yeah.
And ended up being successful and not interested.
Yeah, but that's just the drive through piece.
Yeah.
Um, do we want to talk about a hotel or in, um? And you guys talked about that a little bit last time.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
You know. Up to, do we want to limit the the it's. But it's about a special permit, a special permit.
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
It wasn't, in what district?
No, downtown.
Yes, it says, it's hard to say, yes, but we're talking.
Okay, so we're trying to figure out how to get these, okay, go ahead, John, you want to?
Do you have to look at the site that you're defining, right? And what's a viable location might be for a town? And in the area that that you've described. Uh, to bed and breakfast?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe twenty minutes.
Eight what, sorry?
No, I think that practice, that's six.
I don't think there's a site on in this district currently that would.
I think the gas station.
You might, you need, you need twenty parking spaces. It's tough, it's tough, but there are sites, they're just not really in this district as you find. So if that's something that you're serious about, I think you should be, because then it's a great idea. Then we have to put it in the, in, hey, district where it's feasible.
In your opinion, that's where?
General district.
General district, rock, we're blocking.
I recommend that we add it to the L C D. By the highway. Easily accessible, still brings people to the community. Then they can choose to migrate downtown. And third, the residents don't have to try and stay in up in Gloucester, don't want to go Beverly. Um, so if you have many, any sort of beds, uh, even just business, not large enough, but they're on their own space. Um, it also relieves some of the pressure on, um, the, uh, Airbnbs and Virgos and stuff like that. It does, or many people rent those because there is an alternative to being there, so.
We've always had that on across the street from here, um, so, up on Bridge Street.
People would not walk from the L C D to downtown.
No, they would walk.
It would be a place where people would go have a hotel and stay there for the night by car against the highway sort of thing.
Yeah.
They wouldn't come spend a beautiful weekend in Manchester, that's my.
And I think we should allow it in the downtown, but if you're looking for a second district, I think the L C D is the second district.
General district.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, go ahead, Sue, Sue's got it.
So the counter to that is that. There is currently a residential district. And people who live in apartments in the general district or single family homes in the general district, it's a residential neighborhood to them. And adding a dense, um, facility like an inn or a hotel. Where it's constant in and out of people and cars is something. People don't want in their residential.
It's just, it's called vibrance. I understand, but, you know, Concord has had an inn in the center of town for a couple hundred years. Um, you know, most New England towns where they dropped off people by coaches and 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 horses had hotels right in the center of town. So it's been something that's been part of our history forever, we have them in town, it's all they burned down typically.
It would be a, like, we were writing along the harbor.
Yep.
It was one near. There's a beautiful land in, um. In Bowlin, they got the name of it.
Yeah, Briar, Briar Barnum.
Yeah, Barnum, yes, beautifully done, which is like something that would, you know, be perfectly Manchester. You know, there's no reason not, you shouldn't allow that. Of course.
You're also.
Uh, let's, uh, I, um, other other issues, Mark, around the downtown that we should talk about. Like, um, let me just get what other issues we need to talk about.
I will go for.
That's, um.
Helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I I'll take on one last set of comments on downtown.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, just.
Uh, so you got going to work, um, the, uh, lot coverage issue in previous, and, um, and then also you'll discuss height regulations, okay? Um, I didn't read this step, I think, I'm sure you would be improved, but, um. I'm not, because I look for a studio or two, that's not listed as a specific use, but not.
A cafe.
And then finally, in terms of drive through, drive up windows, did that include the bank, M and T bank doesn't drive up window.
Yeah, they do this, but I think he was talking about drive up fast food, you know, bank, drive up food establishments, that might be a answer.
Yeah, that's, that's the review, the.
Well, I know.
Okay, great, um, I think we're, um. Move on to some of the next things. Um, so thank you everybody for coming, please feel free to say.
Thank you.
Um, any comments from online? I'll see him, right, if you, uh, comment, so. Okay, the next, uh, topic we're going to talk about is your, uh, senior housing. Mark, I know you, uh. Um.
So, yeah. My presentation was this morning, I did follow those up, uh, with, um, council, with, uh.
Maybe you can summarize what those comments.
So, are are, it's several different, um. Things that we were talking about this morning, garden scene housing, the senior. Things that we were talking about this morning, garden scene housing, because senior housing is. It's the term means a lot of different things, so it can mean everything from nursing homes. To independent living, to a restricted house, so we we had talked about breaking it down. And the first item we talked about is that we could have a line item. A bylaw that says um hospitals, um nursing homes and sanatoriums. So. The hospitals and sanatoriums are kind of. Expecting to ever have a hospital here, sanatoriums can build those anymore, but nursing homes are a good use that that. It's still around and there's uh other types of nursing facility uh nursing homes. We talked about it's called a skilled nursing facility and a rehab center and those are also. They're slightly different, they have slightly different licenses from what I understand, but they're all kind of all into the same new school. So we talked about having a a use specifically. So amending that line item to remove those other two words and. Skilled nursing facilities and rehab center. Um so. When I talked to council and that the you know they are specifically licensed things and that um. People risked those and so if you you had a couple of questions about that or if. Um the other thing that we we had talked about was um allowing. Into strict the choosing um and do we need? To first ask the very basic question, do we need to have a line item allowed in this? The answer is no, we don't, provided it meets the current. So if you own a three unit building, you you want to restrict your three. Units in your building, you're perfectly entitled to do so, providing you go through the process and create the right. Legal framework etcetera to do that, so you don't violate the Fair Housing Act. So that's kind of the the thing.
So senior housing is allowed if you uh but there's no deaths.
But that is, that's the thing, provided there's no change in in density. Right, so a lot of the bylaws um are written specifically to allow a higher density, so. But our first question was, do we need to, if someone wants to, let's say, I know people doing this, they're getting up seeing family, they want to. Redo their house in two units, restrict them, can they do it by right? The answer is yes, they can.
Some other defer to council, but I don't believe that's correct personally, yeah. If the council does, okay.
I mean, provided you go through the correct steps and do the right.
And say that's be authorized when local. This is very English.
Yeah. So the the local zoning would be as if you allow those types of users at a higher density than what's allowed by driving. And which is what many councils do, which they allow. Uh oftentimes upon bigger parcels, take the tent or parcel and allow. Five units an acre, you can do fifty units on that ten acre parcel, they set standards, you have to have the buffer. Proper, you are asked to be. Theory was down sewer or. Road of a certain size, that type of thing, they set various parameters. Um so uh. But that's within a bylaw and allowed by by law, so um that's that's what we had also discussed as well. So um and so there's different types of senior housing, there's. Danger, they're strictly housing, there's assisted living facilities as well, so. Those are a couple of things that can be defined differently and have very specifically different rules, so. Control it by zones, where you can allow them some zones and not in others. I mean, obviously you have different rules for different zones. And among sizes and certain zones like higher than. Scripts and what, so so you can tailor it specifically. To a different community and what you desire. Um now that doesn't mean that the market is going necessarily. You know, right, something that it's wants, that people are not. At least uh. I mean, put it out there, so.
Can I just go back to a couple of things? One is the question of age restriction. Um if I think there are different rules for rentals and for uh just old. Uh property, so we should just follow up, not just. And uh yeah, so that is where. We would want to encourage some age restriction. And is I think Massachusetts law will help us. And then the second thing is, did you look at our depth? I'm trying to figure out how, where I'm going in my head is, if there's going to be a fall town meeting. Which portions of this would we undertake not? Oh, because it seems to me to do everything is. There's not enough time to sort out the many aspects of of this. Um and I think they, if we don't currently allow, if the laws allow us, if we need to have a zoning change to allow. Age restriction, age restricted housing, we should put that in. If it's not currently allowed by right, so that way we, if somebody wants to have a or even. Permit in the general district by special permit and they they see it as being age restricted as a uh benefit. To their marketability, then that would be allowed, so we want to make sure that happens. It may currently, it looks to me like there's a little bit more nuance than it has to be. So we need to, the second thing is the definitions of our current, in our current zoning. Did you have a chance to ask council if they were any good? Yeah, it seems to me that, it looks to me that there, assisted living, which is defined by the, that's general laws. Do you care by general laws, in kind of living facility, facility providing apartments for rent with optional services? So forth, on term care facility. Facility uh including convalescent or nursing home, subject to certain regulations. Senior housing, housing for people over fifty five. Even housing facility, be sort of any of those and senior housing laws are reflected. So that we put those in when we redid the definitions, since we need to add additional definitions. Perhaps for a. Skilled nursing facility that we. That's the word, that is maybe the thing, so that if, as we go forward to allow certain. Uh sort of types of those, we have to think that. Then the other thing is that we, when you look at our use table to mark at this, that. One of the commer- community facilities that is allowed is this charitable or philanthropic use. For hospital, nursing care facility or sanatorium. Now. Hospital, nursing care facility and sanatorium, hospitals. Is, nursing care facility and sanatorium are not in our definitions, so we have no idea what they mean. Um so yeah, the it is, those are allowed by planning board special permit. Everywhere except the L C D. So does that make sense? So I would think we start with that, like. And yeah, so those definitions and figure out, are there a couple, or they're one of those that. You know, and it seems to me that a larger facility run as a commercial type use in the L C D. Makes some sense as a first start. Um yeah, that's just where, now that's not getting at the conversions of larger homes or. Other kinds of things, but. Um or the increased density um and the parking, all those other things, because I'm I'm looking at fall town and what can we get done? Um if.
So we're all in agreement that the senior housing at some level is to be. And so they are not appropriate, so.
Right. But then what and where?
What is?
What is senior housing? Well, I don't know what is, I mean, page three and four in your uh document here on senior housing was helpful. Just glad to have it because like what is it?
Right.
In some ways, I'd like to ask the gentleman for the truth, what in your mind senior housing?
Good question. I mean, there's legal interpretation, it's just a general feeling about whether you encourage seniors to have housing that's dedicated for them. So I'm a lot more aware, so I'm not going to report to describe what senior housing is from a village perspective, but the idea. In the communities I'm familiar with, most familiar with, that there's areas or buildings that seniors are known, it's like. With affordable housing, we have special senior housing. It's just an element of the community that's that that is designated for those older citizens.
And then when you think about it, do you imagine that as a large institutional sort of structure, like Brookfield Village, or do you imagine? Sort of houses scattered about the other four services?
I don't have any perhaps a string of houses together, there would be. I saw a small group of houses that would be gathered, it would be. First floor living for seniors, they would, they'd be able to lock in the house without finding upstairs. Or I guess you need that, but that's what I. We got.
So it's more a small group of townhomes.
I think it certainly do one well, I'm just trying to envision what it would look like.
No, it's true. They, the questions, uh well, uh John.
Yeah, so from a building code, when you um senior housing is essentially multifamily housing. Typically, because they are, they tend to be either business driven or mission driven, they are done through the forty B process. And they then can be characterized as senior living, being age restricted, which you can imagine. Uh is quite, is more popular than just a multifamily housing like the one proposed in our town. Because if it's age restricted, it won't have an impact on schools. And they drive less and maybe have less cars on on the road, so it's a less impactful to the community, but it's still a good thing to do. So um but the only real difference between them is they might have a community room on the first floor. Um. That's really kind of it, I mean, besides that, generally speaking, multifamily housing, so we would have to allow multifamily housing. And again, what I would encourage you guys is to think about the town. And where those things would be appropriate and where we could actually achieve them. We do have some sites in town where it could be done.
So we may have some sites, but we have to zone by zones. And so that's one of the challenges um.
That density thing was interesting. That if if a senior housing was proposed with a certain density, maybe that could be allowed in a. District, although I'm not sure, to be honest, I'm not sure how it's, it's it's typically done by by forty B, in which case it's.
Years ago, that's how it was, a lot of the early. Each district had fifty five and all of them done by forty B. Then in around the early two thousands, there was a lot of each restricted housing and they went more towards just. Regular.
Yeah.
Uh unrestricted house. Um there might be like resurgence of that as population ages. Um and available sites where towns have each restricted housing by laws kind of. Enough, um so uh so that that is one way it has. Pass, um another way is to write a bylaw. And you know, you can say, well, you can imbue it. Minimum lot size with a certain density under certain conditions. Um is 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 one another way of doing it, another way of trying to do it is. I've never seen before it's uh Christmas brought up is to allow it. Um kind of as in small scattered sites, you know, if you have under the same. Scenario, but on a small scale, so if you have an acre or you have an existing building of a certain size, you're allowed to. Uh. Redevelop that into a smaller, by smaller density um. And have five units, let's say, I'm gonna go here, um like in a single, on single property. Again, um it's a different way of doing it, it's not. We don't see that, I've seen that before, but. That might be a marketing thing, you know, I'm passing by law. Reason why we haven't seen it is. Lot of places is is a desire. And it's not a sort of right.
Or it might not be economically feasible. I can state a few examples, um Boulders up in Wenham. Uh I think that was twenty four units and twelve duplexes with like a with a common building. Um quite nicely done, I think that's that was.
Oh, now we acres.
It's like a.
Yeah.
But there's a better example. Which is the Maybles, which is right here in downtown, which is an old mansion. It's converted to senior housing, where a bunch of townhouses around it, are very attractive, and likes of a lot.
That's in the Hamilton's.
Wait, downtown.
And it's a big old post.
Right, I don't see, you don't see the viability of a smaller facility like Mark was describing.
Actually, they do, yeah, in fact, there's, they are, they exist all around, this one, I think this one rally, there's. Uber reports had a very special model that they're working on where. A bunch of homeowners basically get together and create a community facility that they all participate in. So it's so the senior, the senior facilities, the central core service. That would work really well, I can just.
So how do we make it possible by zone?
I think the uh the challenge, Manchester. Have more time to change and there's, we've certainly among, you know, heard also. Sort of my opinion, but I just, it's important, that people fear that a multifamily next in a re- single residential district. Is a change that is. Unanticipated, unwanted, now the the benefit, of course, is that if you uh, you know, have seniors, they're not having. Presumably not having parties and travel less and all of those things, now the flip side of that is that if you have um sort of. Five units with seniors and then three of them, I, you know, be continuing care, they can have more traffic kinds of thing, that's. Good in the the theory, oh, and maybe that's the case for um just in the same way that if single family has. You know, for teenagers, you have a lot of traffic for period, so it's not, it's actually the same.
So to to just state the obvious here, we we have a very uh, we have a, we're, we live in a town where they. Uh relatively speaking, wealthy population, more aging, we're in some very big houses often. And I'd like to not be in those houses, have a place to go, but they still want to stay in the area, they might might want to stay in town. And it's very hard to find a place to go, therefore, they don't. And the houses stay occupied and they have help come in and that's okay too, but the houses just remain as part of that until they pass. Um anyway, it, there's not a very efficient cycle of uh passing on, you know, downsizing and. And staying in town, I know that's an old story that we've talked about a lot, but we still haven't found a way to solve it.
And zoning is only one tool.
Yep.
Next, that's smart.
I think the next steps are to draft for senior housing. First step would be to draft an article to direct. One line item that we have for, um. Missing homes and hospitals and sanatoriums to change that. Before converting homes to our our S, our bylaw. As after I checked, we have a specific definition where long term care facility that might match. Who the nursing. Please staff line item.
What do people think about putting out about long term care, sort of larger facility, presumably larger facility in LCD? In LCD?
Wherever we put it.
We don't, we don't put it anywhere.
We don't put it anywhere. In order to make it attractive, but we create all the time in the world.
Absolutely.
Like there's no spot for it, other than somewhere off on the other side of one twenty eight.
Right.
That's it.
That's. So the, but the current, I guess my point is the current zoning is nonsense.
Yeah.
It charitable, not, many of these are for profit. And not in LCD. So to me, we should at least flip that, use the definitions that we have. And at least allow those in the LCD. Now, the argument against that is going to be, oh, my God, we're putting residents, people living in the LCD and that's sort of been a. A, uh, third rail.
But the hotel use, we're talking about.
Right.
Hotel.
And also look at the.
The child.
Bodies.
That's true.
Been talking about.
Right. It seems like at the very least, if it's a, you know, I don't have a home each person or if there are any persons. That's not our job. You're all about. Yeah. Then second question is, should there be other districts? Besides the LCD that it should be allowed in, um, with special permit.
I was thinking, I was thinking, yeah, I I talked to Chris about a lot about that. I started to speak with about money. Your own peril. And my own peril. But it's, yes, maybe here, there is some viability to put this in a residential neighborhood if it's done properly.
Yeah.
Not to a large scale. So we don't have constant traffic. I think there's a viability to.
Maybe it's just.
I've heard this conversation in town from people that have lived here a long time, John, to your point that want to. Um, secure a location that they can build their own community, live out their lives with their friends. And they could do that.
We should have a plan, you know, plan for the.
Maybe that's going to happen eventually, whether or without. Can I, can I ask a broad question up here? Is there a developer of of the fifty five and older or or senior housing out there that would consider someplace in Manchester? What what is their, what is their tipping point saying, yes, it's viable here? You have enough land, you have enough, you have enough mass to do it.
Well, cost of land is the first thing.
It's huge.
Um, second thing is the 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 size, sewer, but, uh, also size of the project, you know. The smallest project I've ever done with a developer and it was a forty B. It was a forty B with was four units.
How many?
Four. And he said afterwards, I will never do that again.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. You said four, not forty.
Four, four zero. Very hard, um, to make it pencil out. Just hard. Uh, but I like the idea. Uh, the the other thing is if you're providing services, right? To a small building that has only four people in it. You know, my, my, my dad was at, um, Harriach House for a couple of years. And there, there's eighty people. And I'm sure that they were profitable, right? But they're they're.
Our firm has sales.
Yeah, that's good.
Services.
Yeah. There's a, there's a building that I always thought was senior housing, but I don't think it really is. Uh. I'm not sure if it's in Gloucester or Manchester, but if you're driving toward Gloucester on your left hand side. What is that?
It's an old mansion, it's an apartment.
Okay, but it's not specifically for seniors.
Summer Street?
Is that?
Yeah.
But I always thought that would have been a really great little senior project. Also think the Nahata's House on School Street, a beautiful house. I sort of imagined that that would be a beautiful, great little senior house. So I I love the the idea that we could find someone to do it.
One fifteen School Street is on, on. It's a eight, it's an acre. But it's.
You've been there. It's a mess.
It's a mess, but it's a piece nice, piece of.
Yeah, it is.
So, Sarah, your question here is, is there anything that we want to?
Right, right.
So I think your, your suggestion about just cleaning up some of the language, you use the word nonsense.
Yeah.
That would be a pretty simple first step, I would think. We get people thinking about that.
Right. Well, maybe to sort of, I think Chris would argue that, you know, take these definitions, that if each of these definitions was aligned in our table.
Yeah.
And we figured out which districts they make sense in. Um, and had them all by special permit just to start. And maybe we leave it at that.
All by special permit is an improvement.
Maybe, I mean, then it's it's a little bit let the market.
Yeah.
And not quite a regulate the fact of it.
I would certainly get the stats.
Of the town. Well, yeah, the city of town. And, um, if you include them all, just if you include all the districts, just for, or at least, you know. Uh, people could manage to remove districts and we might see where, and that might be the simplest.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
To set certain like density limits or some something.
Certainly define type.
Yeah, well, we have a variety of definitions here for different types of housing, from continued here to independent living.
Right.
Right, so, um. I think so, if it doesn't, in in arbitrary, you don't need to set certain. Criteria. This is. Have to be developed.
Tony.
Hey, I hate to be a broken record on this, but.
There we go.
Uh. You haven't been here long. You don't have, look, you know, the calendar, you have Mark and. Inclusive of all the, you know, the twenty eight day process for citizen petitions to be added to the special town meeting. Article, uh, articles to reporting and utilized comments at our meeting about giving people even more time than that so that we can review those. Select board really needs to decide whether they're going to set a date for special town meeting in November on Monday next week.
Right.
And I think, and I think that they. I would assume that they would want some, it doesn't speak final draft, but they wouldn't want to see some pretty. Decently thought out draft language to make that decision. Since you're talking about what do we want to include, I think that you're you're you have this balance of making the special town meeting worth its time. Right? Uh, but also one week.
To get it together. Yeah.
Point series, not a broken, I agree.
Right.
You guys, you know, the conversation's really good and I and I don't want to hurt the momentum of that. Um, but it is a realistic. Understanding of a schedule, I think that you have to consider.
There's a big job about wanting everybody what the proposal is exactly on.
Um, uh. Let's just stick with senior housing. Any more senior housing comments about? Um, never sort of go back to the larger issue of. You have a senior housing comments right now? Okay, uh, yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, James, on that issue, I'm not sure why you rush this downtown zoning. Unless you're afraid this is not a project that's coming up where somebody is is helping to. You're applying me to get something that's.
Yeah, I mean.
Like this, this to me definitely looks like it's right.
Okay.
This may be.
Nothing. Um.
And there's a lot of stuff in.
I want to say that to Tony, though, the, um, you know, we've. Bar to have something to the select board for Monday is a totally new. It hasn't been our practice in the past for the select board tos to sort of. Uh, bless something. I mean, I, my, I, I also did the calendar, but because of October sixth, we need to have it wrapped to the select board.
Um, I agree with that. I'm not too much enough that need to bless it.
No, but.
Well, I think they need, if they're making a decision on whether to set a date for a town meeting, they want to know that.
It's.
Things are going to be ready to go.
Right.
Uh, it's not necessarily, you know, having the pen and editing what you're suggesting. It's more so just feeling comfortable that.
I accept.
Town for.
So my opinion on that is that the downtown, while it's not, it's current draft needs to be fixed. I think we know where we want to be. And to me, that's, you know, Mark and Kathy and Town Council need to get a really good draft that is, that gets us, that is exactly, that is what we want to be. So that, um, senior housing, I'm trying to figure out how we bound it. And I think, um, that's.
Yeah, and the way, the way I see it is that. Even just what we discussed tonight, if we go with the things that we feel that can be put together for town meeting. We still have like five or six articles. And so that's going to entail a fair amount of discussion for town meeting. So by putting this out to the spring and then adding what we might work on in the spring. You might be talking about ten extra articles for this annual town meeting hall on zoning. Which might be a little more than, like, oftentimes, you know, is willing to 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 manage. Which is why it's always good to split up some zoning in the fall and some in the spring. So I think, you know, the ones I can see as as being. Manageable to to have ready are the specific downtown thing. The long term care facility one. Uh, you would probably have the hotel in broken out as a separate article. Uh, although it's just a simple line item, um. We would probably have, uh, perhaps the parking reduction for the downtown is this specific article. Just so that we don't, if there are a lot of people who feel strongly about not reducing parking, it doesn't. Kind of kill the whole reason we have the downtown, which both people seem to, uh, uh, to be supportive. And then maybe one of the other definitions as I work through it of the senior housing. Um, whether it's, uh. We have multiple definitions in here. Now, maybe there is a way of. Of cherry picking one specific thing, working on that one task, moving that one forward. So.
So public has opportunity to read that before. It was going to be, it'll be massage anyways after the select board meeting.
You do? No, that'll be public hearings and forums.
The select board meeting will be open meeting. Maybe we could go in. It will, you know, it would be nice to go in there and see what we got tonight.
Yeah.
Right? And and we, so we could say this, or yeah, this looked pretty good. Compliment the election forum, no it doesn't.
So the select board meeting Monday would be just to to set a date for a town meeting. The the final draft of their article, fuck, would be the, probably October, what is it?
We would have it submitted for here October.
It's not three. So we. Okay. Special meeting.
Yeah, so we would have probably another public forum session of some type. We haven't discussed what what it is. And we would have the, our second meeting, uh, in two weeks. And then perhaps.
Perhaps the fifth Monday.
There's a fifth Monday of another meeting the following week that we could vote on the actual articles. We can submit those that week, so it'll be on the select board agenda.
And then the fact of the matter is, we, we, there's September, remaining of September, we could do a forum in late September, one in. In October and actually one in November. There is actually, because you know, after, and public here, you know, so we have. Uh, there's time. The question is, do we have the capacity to, um. Do that? And if there's any other things that that are going to be on town, would be on the warrant or would do, Tony, do you think it would just be zoning?
There's a couple of things that we could add to it, uh, if we're going to have a lot, but they're not necessary. They wouldn't call for a special time.
Right, for just those, but you, if you have the opportunity, take off. Um. Right, I'm, uh, I think what we need to do is we need a solid draft of these articles from you, Martin. Um, that are really, uh, and I'm going to suggest that we have a working group. On a couple of these, uh, to really put different, you know, to talk through them. So maybe we can post a couple of working group meetings. Um, no, uh. Who's, who would like, and it's Chris and Sue are interested in this, senior housing. Over there, but it is us in the town. We'll post, we'll post a senior housing and a downtown working group meetings in between now and our next meeting. So that at least a subset of us are really in the weeds on it. And, uh, we will make this thing better. Uh, we'll hear what the select board says. But nonetheless, we still have to keep working on these things, removing the law, whether we are, whether April will be here before you know it. Actually.
Yeah, just the.
I know, exactly. Um. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the, um, driveway article. Did you, um, get him?
I don't care.
Thanks, John.
I just, I just left that on, um.
Last time.
There needs changes based on our last discussions, so.
Okay, so I'm going to pass over that because there's not any changes since the last meeting.
Yeah, unless anybody's done anything that I suggested, but I went through it clearly. By law changes particularly. It's straightforward.
Okay. Um, so any other, um. And then other changes to zoning, I think that we've probably already bitten up enough. That we, uh. Only wants some of the notes to table, at least we need to.
Yeah, some of the notes we we may need to adjust. One of, one of the problems is ways we exist in, we start. Defines things. So it's a little challenging, but I think the Kathy's suggestion about creating a specific line for. Excuse in the.
Yeah, I think so.
And maybe your definition that sets a couple of requirements. That makes the most sense, so.
Yeah. I think, um, maybe we should have, what I would suggest is use Kathy's time to help craft this, um, downtown bylaw. Um, in the, in. Yeah. Okay.
Um, so one thing I've got something in. Should we vote on the white mass, the geography of it? Or we're not ready to do that?
What did we decide on proposed provisions?
Well, I think we.
Personal.
I think the, the only one that I'm not quite really think about is the ten Summer Street.
Okay.
I see his point.
Yeah.
But I think the fact that it's all one, it's already, it's already one portion, why are you here so late? It's already a residential.
Yeah, it's part of the community with all these other units. Yeah. I mean, why can't we have?
Let me go hard with that.
Yeah, yeah. It's apparently about the designation of this commercial.
Right, so that's very out of commercial, that lot already has commercial use.
Right. Well, I have a forty B, so we have.
It's fine, it's fine, six one F goes out of because it just essentially fairly recently was redeveloped again.
But honestly, actually keeping the zone as good as tight as possible.
Yeah.
Is a good idea for our homeowners.
Right. Right, so you would try, you can always expand things and.
Yeah, with required, I don't know. Absolutely change, I mean, find new docks or. I mean, who knows how, if it's even possible.
So then um then the map as you presented, I think is what we what we um.
You know, you're gonna take the laughing doll out.
Yeah, we're gonna bring the doll in.
No.
But that's part of the company.
But it's it's okay to be part of the company as long as it's. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Right.
But but I mean, we want to make. It does, uh it's more examples, the laughing doll of one word span.
They can, they're a condo.
Uh but it's also uh flower shops, it's a condo as well, so they bought up. They bought that space. And they found their docks a lot for it because it is commercial, they wanted to expand to a bigger dining room. Then they wouldn't be able to do that.
Why not, it's commercial around that.
In the general district, it would have to comply with. The dish higher parking requirements, which they wouldn't be able to provide.
Um. The flower shop I hear is moving.
Okay.
It's hoping to choose School Street.
You know, the.
Yeah. Okay, well. I think it makes sense to leave laughing doll. I think that that there's agreement, so let's um oh, he's back, sorry. Um so uh to get that off our list and then we consider the. That's a good idea, so we know the Chiang would be returned, right? So would you like to record uh make a motion to approve the map presented on September eighth? Yes, I propose downtown district.
I, yes.
But thank you, I'm actually better. Sandy would like to second that, any other discussion?
So can we consider having the this parking lot to it? Yes, it's a perceived thought.
Ah.
Is the legion for that better?
I don't think that's, if they're municipal uses right now, they're not changing the change, but they're not. Um.
Let's say somebody who are doing air rights development on the parking lot.
We'll change the zoning.
Yeah, it's.
I think that you you're gonna have so many other problems.
Air rights development.
I I don't think, I think you're, if you think about our our original intent, which is to the street front, street fronts, you know, and to kind of. Preserve what we have today.
Just for the store.
Okay, any good? Anybody else on ours about that? Okay, as Sue has made a motion, Sandy has seconded that, um all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. I closed, okay, thank you. Um. All right, liaison updates, um. I think we forgot to assign somebody, so I will do it quick, I have, no, sorry, I happen to have the. I'll show you when I show the. Planning board, the Slapboard. Um for uh the harbor management, I'll just say it, because I happen to have slides, so why not? Um. It it won't be long, but there are a couple of things that not not tomorrow. But you know, in some future date. Um. So here uh the harbor management plan has a couple of um. Two screens, um uh. Um five key areas and in each area we've identified a um. Me, big idea, um first, and they're not, these are not. Yet prioritized, so or they order supporting the marine economy, which has boeys, tourism, shell fishing. Fish. Um and the big idea there is potentially a water use zoning overlay, that would be easy. Um.
Water use.
So. So.
Let's give that to the bottom meeting.
Yeah. Absolutely, there's some things like that. The act of state approved our management plan, where you can post that. Um so that's one. Big idea, the second is provide safe and available waterways, which is sort of obvious. But the big idea here is we don't actually know what our capacity is. Our upper, our peak capacity and if we are at it. On moorings, peak use navigation, emergency response staff and funding and facilities maintenance.
Don't know the dynamics of that, that's in the paddles, you have a few years.
Well, um.
Harbor wars, wow.
Until, you know, right now, people out there and drive around the harbor, it's pretty darn quiet. There's no big winds and all of that, but peak, it's like peak parking, right, it's like in peak state. So that we don't really have a good handle on this, that's our best, the committee's. Like big idea on this. The third is uh maintain public access, public access is always part of these harbor management plans. And um most towns, there's increase, but we feel that we have a lot. So um that we actually have significant uh public access on food, use beaches for small boats, boat ramps. And we need to maintain that, maintain, I don't mean maintain like fix eight, I mean not impede, not uh. Uh ensure healthy water quality, we have, while we have water quality on. Beach closures, that kind of thing, we don't actually know. What the water, we don't have a comprehensive water quality harbor testing. We suggest that before, but that there's some policies that they seem to make sense, like. Around fertilizers along the harbor or around um. Uh. Climate change and and so forth, that well, the water quality data that needs to be. Improved and we have some ideas about how to do that. And lastly, actually, the fifth one, we just changed the other night from respond to a change climate to. Uh increase long term preparedness. And that's around um climate, but it's also around uh the planning for. All these facilities and comprehensive assets that we have in the harbor that are town assets. How do we, you know, what's that planning look like and. In that's in a certain part of capacity. So that's what we. It's it's hard because we kind of hope that those. No.
You're doing a lot.
Yeah.
And so a lot of that has expensed against, so is that something that goes into budget eventually?
We're trying, no, I think that's the flip, is how capacity is around, yeah, some testing and maybe another study have some project. These is.
Yeah.
But one of the questions is how much? What is our limit um or, you know, can, should the town's budget be? This is not necessarily harbor manager, we feel like we can't answer these things. Should it be two percent of our total budget or should be twenty two percent, you know, that kind of, how much can we afford?
What is it right now?
I don't know. Um but uh and I don't have any, well, we don't have any way to judge.
It's an enterprise, right, so.
So.
It kind of wins outside, yeah, I don't know, I'll make it kind of out there.
But as is the, so maybe the better question is the enterprise. Capable of growing at the same rates that the. That's, yeah, it's a hard, it's a bincom question of how to straighten or cover it, so. Um. The point is, you know, more and more and more and more um. And is it, we don't. And the consult, we thought the consultants would help us with this one. That's the idea. Yeah, we're fun to come there, um. All right, um correspondent, uh any other public comment before we on any other issues?
Well, there were some other, you said you were gonna uh talk about.
About what?
Well, there was a conservation commission.
It's definitely a facility, so it did, you know. It's a big deal. But I've seen Tony more than I've seen my wife. We met twice on, I've met three times so far. We've been twice, doing this building. Comes to peace here, fire department and EPW and then we went to. Essex and looked at Dairy Facility, which is. Then we went to uh Boffel Dairy Facility, which has opened for a month, brand new. And it's uh pretty stark the comparison between what we have, this is. I'll just call it the credit, appearance of this brand new facility is beautiful, beautiful solution. So that that is. The way the way I see it, like Chuck's hand, they have TPW here, see, he's looking for this facility, could not be given guy who says to. Are the sighting, are the location, are the configuration, are the massing buildings? And everything associated with this thing, so this is, not about financial, these are these are big dollar items that we can try. And I think I I do celebrate the fact that Chuck is actually engaging. Members from each one of the the groups to actually participate in the solution of the same. Now with 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 Andy Oldman, he's got two guys. Have ten time development or industrial facilities forever. Was more than was playing with, I mean, more of this big problem, so. I think it's it's a big deal and it's a big deal, something that has to be deserved.
You put commercial on the first floor?
My fault is some of the idea Chuck has got, it's 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 pretty wild. There we, there are some like uh mixed use. That that's municipal and commercial and something. Definitely brought a developer in and.
It probably depends where it's gonna be, right, if it's gonna be on uh the campus side.
Yeah, the land, the apartment, the chairs. Yeah.
Well, the campus side is the is the the site of choice right now, some of those kind of land up there.
He did a tour up there as well, it's absolutely empty right now, nothing up there.
Yeah, it's the old, no buildings, no nothing.
No.
No trash, no.
From the old.
The old, the old conference, right.
And I understand there's just rubble. What?
Uh I don't think it's rubble, it it's 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 a lot of great changes across here. And there's a lot of things you can do, maybe this maybe this multi facilities can fit up on there, that's what they're focusing on right now. And and which opens the question, by the way, the old DPW is saying what that ends up being. That's a that's a fairly large flat area.
Senior housing.
Uh huh.
Senior housing.
You know, how definitely up there, definitely, so you got to do a lot of cycle reservation there, because I can feel that. Over the eighty years, it's been, it's not been there yet, but. It is, you know, so this is, this has gone from more than just being advisory board down for planning board. So now it's really engaging and developing these all these town facilities, it's really quite exciting. And we accelerate that thing, we open up a very large site. And whatever it intends to be in all the pictures, it's very interesting. Something we really, really should keep our brains on.
Okay, thank you, anybody else want to do a liaison?
Just one question about the conservation, is it going to issue or can we make?
Mission.
Conditions, yeah, so they talked about Reed Park. And it just reminded me that Vina, who's been here for a long time, talking about Reed Park, and we had a lot of conditions on. What he was gonna do, and I noticed that the conservation commission was talking about a lot of those conditions. So I just wonder, is there any? You know, crossover from what we.
Be what, be due to living, be the.
Just like the the work that needs to be done to prepare it for, you know, the tree work, remember Laura was talking about making sure that they had. The right people there, so that it wouldn't destroy the trees, and they talked about that too, but. There are other conditions that I can remember that we put on there, and I just wonder what happens to that.
I think the discussion was fairly similar, I was there, I mean, like you say, they discussed a lot of the same things, um. Maybe um.
I think the result of that was. The problem was a lot of these concerns were dealt with through the planning board's condition, so they don't need to be. It's not like.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but they didn't say that, and that's why it just seemed like they were duplicating effort.
I thought they did say that.
Did they? Oh, I must have been snoozing at that point then, okay.
It was later in the meeting.
Okay.
I think they did say, I think they did say, ultimately said. A lot of those these concerns are already covered by the planning boards and.
Okay, well, that's great, okay. You're sorry, I missed that one. Sorry, chief.
It's okay, it's been fast forwarded. Okay, um. Minutes?
Any minutes in the.
Five minutes, there was one, um. They're calling uh Mr. Brewster, Mr. Martin. So there was uh on the eight eleven minutes in the liaison updates, they were referring to a Mr. Martin who was reporting on. Um. Facilities, so I. We haven't.
I'll correct that.
Thanks, Gail, I just wanna give Gordon credit because he is such a fine job.
I'm on seven twenty eight, I'm listed as absent, but I was there.
Okay, seven twenty eight. Did you somebody, you know, I'm not in the.
No, Gail's. Yeah, maybe you can wait.
There are two that are way late, April seventeenth and May twelfth.
Okay, um.
April seventeenth was the presentation of the zoning bylaws each member gave, one gave their presentation for prior to town meeting.
Yep, and those are my, I think I wrote. Okay, I'll take a motion to um approve um. The minutes of April seventy two. Okay, and um. Two seconds, okay. Okay, um uh in favor, I can't have uh Sandy or Brian vote this, so all in favor. And we have two extensions, thank you, okay, um. May twelfth.
There was not a majority to, there was, there was, there were not enough members who were present at the last meeting, though. There was no dispute about the minutes. We needed a couple extra people to say, okay.
Okay, so um so one thing, there says May twelve, five, twelve, twenty five, but it's actually, we had it directly August.
Twelve, right.
And it says that I was absent. And I was. Uh women, no, this is made sense because it says we did approval not required for Spiro Hill. That was, it's so the date should be May. Twelfth. And I was present. Eight.
Okay.
On the heading. That that was the Spiro Hill.
That's one of the old.
That was what, that was the one where they did that piece of the, yeah. And so it says that. The miss fully abstained, so can you, this one, need to check who was there because you say that Brian was there. Brian there for area. But Marion, Brian didn't overlap, and I don't know what the date of the collection was.
Very.
It's very confused that. Right, that that one that's dated uh five, twelve, twenty five, we can be checked, because. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um. August eleventh. Okay, it's um well, Sandy was present, no, you were not, Sandy and I were not present, okay, so we cannot vote. I've got a motion on August eleventh, um uh Peter Morton and Chris Seconds. Um I'll take the vote, all in favor. Uh and Sandy and Sarah are abstaining. Okay, and then um. July twenty eighth.
Naomi told me this.
Yeah, Sandy was there. And Brian was not. Okay, and it's your, that's one where Mr. where um. Gordon is misidentified.
Have reflections on nature.
Yeah, okay, so uh. Construction as uh. Is that the one they have in?
And if you go down to liaison reports, it was Mr. Martin, right, the shoot, Gail may have already changed it. It's, is it Brewster now? It's, it's the last, last part of the. It's obvious.
This one's okay, I think this one's okay, I think, um. And I think Brian was not present on, he was on vacation, so Sandy was present on July twenty-eighth, and Brian was not. So I'll take a motion, this is not the one that had that problem. So we'll take a motion, Peter. Second, Gordon seconds, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And Brian is abstaining. Okay. I think that gets us, um. Except for the May, the May twelfth ones need to be fixed.
Okay. I'll fix it.
Thanks, Gail.
Thank you, Gail. Yes, it's the, um, the, the motion, just to be clear, the, uh. August eleventh is the one where the liaison report should say Mr. Brewster, not Mr. Martin. That's the.
Yeah.
That's August eleventh, under VA, so there's a M E R S D building committee. It's Mr. Brewster. Okay, um, great, um, any other things? Motion to adjourn?
I, I have one question, and I'll start the whole downtown thing, but, yeah, but. So it was brought up several times about allowing increased density beyond before units are sold. Um, so, I would guess before I even think about how that, what that might look like. Start reviewing. Properties, seeing what, what's like work, um. How does the board feel? Wow, I mean, uh, what's in fits you?
I'll make a proposal. I'm gonna make a proposal, see whether, obviously, there are still parking requirements and lot coverage for anybody, so. I would say, four units by right, and a mixed use, a mixed use property.
Or residential, yes.
Or not more than fifteen units per acre.
Fifteen units per acre.
Yes, when it is. First, we have each year. There's no acre.
Well, so that means if you have a half an acre, you get.
So, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, what is, uh?
It could be like a Florida sustainable. That's where the MBTA is owned, yeah, but that's.
My, yeah. So my suggestion is, let's look at the goal, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do fall town meeting, the goal is to sort of. Cement what we have today. And get it to pass, so that we protect ourselves on this first board commercial. And I think that. I would stick with the existing zone, existing density, not really even. Talk about it too much, because the harbor point is the real place for the density, because that's.
That's.
That's so.
Why, I said maybe five.
Right.
I didn't really, I didn't really wanna go to.
Right. In fifteen units per acre, I guess we'd fifteen units per.
That would be a lot, that would be the parking lot.
And, um. So.
They have ways around.
So I think for me, the question in the immediate is. What do we put, if we are gonna do something in the fall, which is still TV. Do we? Um. I mean, I guess there are people who might not vote for it if there isn't the density, but I think that's less. I think people understand.
What are you suggesting, sir? Are we staying with the four?
Stay with the four, it's because I'm trying not to, I'm trying not to upset too many apple hearts. Yeah, I think that's very, it's been successful, that, yeah, and then. As we think about the gen, remember, we're supposed to do a study of the generalistics, which are now, say, general in town, and you say, well, here's where we should increase density. And that, that's phase two, do that. The other thing, and I think that the working question should be a separate article. Yes. So, uh. Well, we're gonna have to, our town meeting for ourselves, right? So we do the downtown, and then you put the parking density reduction. As, I think you put the commercial, no parking in the original, and then you change with a, a follow-up article. You reduce the park, so that we don't have a Gary Gilbert amendment. On the downtown, because the amendment only needs fifty percent, and then if people feel so strongly about that. It gets changed, then it means that the article could.
So the density should be a separate article.
Density could be a separate article.
Just say, please, whatever this is, I'll look at, I just did a couple properties here.
And so, for example, um. Our existing, I mean, so like, uh, seven central, this to me, um. Is, um, just under six thousand square feet, and. To give you just over, but if you add it. Let's say you need to have a thousand, two thousand square feet to give thanks to your unit. Um, it wouldn't be able to, it'd still be at four, so, uh, as you say, four is the baseline, so. Um, so if someone get bigger parcels, still only can get four, unless you go to the really big, bit much bigger, the next level. Which was like, sometimes they are being, um, able to get. Seven. The units, um, and of course, you get, it's fourth, um. Harbor Point would be three point three acres, but we get fifteen, maybe, five acres.
It's hard to, you know. That, that's.
Yes, people, yes.
Saving our charge was that.
Yeah, so you don't have to do some.
Wouldn't do that right now, I really wouldn't, especially since it just, if, at fifteen units breaker doesn't really get you much. It gets you like a couple units here and there, and the rest is everybody's hat.
I just wanted to make sure that that's, so I don't work on.
I think Harbor Point is something that. Yeah, what are we worried about?
So they, they have a lot of complications of what they're doing. It's a condominium, that the consolidated ownership, the lease will be MBTA, doesn't mean that they can't. Build the garage, relocate spaces, they're allowed to do that, but. Again, it's a lot of moving parts, it'd be years before you can cap it.
So one thing that Jim Brown said was, if you require retail of the first floor. If you fail, we want another story to replace him.
Yes.
No. And after what we've been through the past two years, no.
What have we been through?
MBTA's home.
Well, we got through with a huge mandate from.
Because, because it was repaved by state law.
And also, one of the things we said over and over is, we want to keep the character today, and this is.
Well, return to today is four-story buildings downtown.
Uh, no.
Most.
I have to return.
I, I, you know, I think if the, if the time weren't so short, you can entertain more, because you really have to explain things to people. In pretty straightforward, probably, to back these down.
Well, we're gonna get, I'm sure we're gonna get amendments from, so. We don't. No, that's not okay, but because it's a fifty percent vote, and then they can take down the whole thing. So we should at least allow them to have separate votes, so they can be voted separately. We wanna get this through.
Okay, no, I, I.
I don't understand.
So it only takes fifty percent of the vote, this takes two-thirds to change the vote.
Right.
Fifty percent to approve it, maybe.
Uh.
So if they amend it, with fifty percent.
The county.
And the police votes here.
One of the people who aren't here, who have.
Right, so let's say they get fifty-one percent for the amendment, then you go for the full vote, which takes two-thirds, it gets voted down, so we lose it all.
I think that's, that's why we, you know, that's why you bring up two senses and have these meetings, I keep looking over guests, who, they may have some slightly different. Opinion, like, you know, maybe add more dance, that's why I asked the question, we wanna add more dance, because we didn't get them answered. Uh, but, uh, and, and, but if they feel comfortable with what we propose, the, the. Amendments will be fewer if I'm being clear, and we won't gather a lot of support, so I think, I think I. I've seen very few towns where there are amendments to things that I would propose.
We haven't been to a twenty-town meeting.
When they understood there was more, they totally understood.
No, they didn't, actually, we was, they didn't, they read the draft, and. We, we.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good start. I guess also. We, we, I feel like this issue, I mean, it's sixty-some odd people, including Jim Brown. At that forum, and, uh, and it was written up in the paper, we've written articles, and that, and that, and that. And you have to remember, like, and it's like Rusty had never heard of Sony.
Well, no, that's because he read what we gave him, that's.
Right, no, he thinks, he thinks that like his existing building is non-compliant, therefore, he's going to change it.
Yeah, but that's, that's because what we wrote.
Was, was. Scored, yeah, but anyway, so, um.
I think you just wanna remember two, so the.
I know.
For you.
All right, and I think I heard a motion to adjourn. Uh, all in favor? All right, I. Thank you, everybody. Uh, our next meeting is the twenty-second, and do, uh, potentially pencil in the twenty-ninth, which is another, uh, Monday, it's Monday. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Sam.